Okay. So, when the city attorney is ready, we'll go ahead and report out.
Thank you, Mayor. The Emeryville City Council met in closed session on the item listed on the closed session agenda on a motion by Member Martinez, seconded by Member Bowders on a 5-0 vote. The City Council authorized litigation. That's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
Great. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. I now call to order at 6:42 the special study session. Do we need to do the roll call?
Yes, we can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor Pats.
Here.
Okay. So, do I have a motion for the approval of the final agenda?
It's been moved.
Second.
Great. It was moved by Member Medina, second by Vice Mayor Martinez. Can we get a voice?
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye.
Okay. Any ex parte communications on this item?
No.
Okay. Public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right into the only action item here. And...
Mayor Pats, we have Nicolo DeLuca from Townsend to make a presentation tonight, both on the results of the 2019 legislation, but also seeking your guidance and input on what your priorities will be for the 2020 legislative session as well. Nicolo?
Thank you. Thank you very much, honorable mayor, member of the City Council, Nicolo DeLuca from Townsend Public Affairs. Thank you for your time this evening. It's that time of year, the summary of 2019 with the Ledge platform for what we want to do in 2020. So, I will just quickly say some highlights and some thank yous for some of the great things we did this year. And then, starting on page nine are the recommended items for the platform for 2020. And I'll happily answer some questions and also give an oral update on something that the city manager and I have been working on the past couple of days. I want to thank then-Mayor Medina and Councilmember Bowders and the city manager because this year, we were able to run a bill and got it signed into law to give the city the authority to do a sales tax increase to the voters. If you really want to walk out, I think we made history because initially, the bill was vetoed. And no one saw that coming. And then, we came back like a vampire and were able to get it signed into law. We learned something very new about the New World Order in Sacramento and the way that CDTFA sees things. Thank you to everyone for all your help. It was awesome. We're scrambling because no one was expecting what happened and everyone came together. So, I really, really appreciate everyone's help. And I do want to give a special thank you to, obviously, Assemblywoman Buffy Wicks, but Assemblymember Bill Quirk because he gave us his bill and, no pun intended, Bill and Bill. And it was really cool and it's good to see how well Assemblywoman Wicks works with her colleagues. So, thank you to everyone for that. It was quite a blast. You know, we, the governor, the legislature comes back on the 6th. Governor's going to introduce his budget soon. Obviously, housing is very, very, very important and front of everyone's minds as is homelessness. What we're hearing and curious to hear what some of you all are hearing is on the homeless front, more of a focus on mental health. We expect the HEAP or the H hap funding to come again with the big city mayors asking for an increase, which obviously benefits everyone due to the regional effort of homelessness. There are still a few two-year bills that have to move by the end of January. But then, like I said, so, starting on page nine are goals for 2020, what we want to work on, so happy to discuss, make any changes, and then we'll finalize the report. Two quick things that just happened today. The Legislative Analyst Office weighed in on cannabis taxation. They have given a report. It's lengthy. They are recommending changes to how the state looks at cannabis tax.
Sorry, what is the name of that report?
How High? Is actually the name of the report.
Have we?
Yeah.
You set him up.
They are showing a good sense of humor with their, how they rate bills, if you want to talk about that with the Leafs. But speaking to the Assembly's office yesterday, they have been waiting on this report. The Assembly plans to do, to put something forward. There could be a company Senate bill also for the sake of everyone working well together about rolling back some of the state taxes. So, obviously, that's important because I know you all have a thriving industry. We want to make sure they continue to thrive. And then, so I guess we're kind of talking about cens and then card rooms. This issue just popped up. Really appreciate the city manager flagging this. Been talking to many other colleagues that I work with, other advocates. There's a hearing tomorrow about proposed changes. They are being pushed by some of the tribal casinos that have a negative input, impact on card rooms. Working with my colleagues and others, we have a long list of other cities that have card rooms that we're going to bring in together and kind of tact us from a city point of view. So, updates on that will come. So, thanks to the city manager for flagging that. So, with that, I will be quiet and answer all questions that you all have or do my best and then make any changes and then we'll finalize this.
Great. Thank you. Member Martinez?
Nicolo, thank you for all the work that you do for us. So, in regards to How High, so I just wanted to check in on, you know, AB 286 is still out there and in approach, right?
Correct.
And I'm actually just curious about, you know, it has a sunset of 2022.
Yes.
Are folks really thinking that everything will solidify by then?
Great question. My, working closely with Bonta's office, I think the sunset was to first, out of respective administration, hey, you guys count on some of these funds. There's other, like, social justice and other programs that would benefit from it. So, we'll do a sunset, see where we are.
Right.
What's now interesting with the Legislative Analyst Report, I didn't see a sunset, though I briefly scanned it, and they're talking about simplifying the taxes, so no excess or cultivation, and then maybe at point of sale, but then also some things I think might be confusing about a potency tax. But I, I think that the, I do suspect there would be a sunset. I don't know how long. 10 years makes sense. You see, you have a good database.
Yeah.
But that was also kind of a notch to some of the folks that helped with Prop 64, that essentially, we're going to be able to apply for some of those tax dollars and to kind of try to make sure that everyone was balanced.
Okay. And then, so the idea behind 286 was to lower the excise tax from 15 to 11 as the LAO's report devise a whole different...
Whole different.
Black box.
If I can, I read the whole thing this afternoon. Couldn't stop laughing.
How high? How high?
They proposed four different tax structure amendments. One of those...
That doesn't simplify things, by the way.
And so, one of those was the tiered ad valorem tax that he mentioned based on potency, which we've only seen in Illinois and it hasn't been implemented yet. But for their rating system, which was literally one marijuana leaf to four marijuana leaves in terms of accomplishing the state's goals, they did not rate Bonta's bills' structure particularly well. So, my reading of the LAO report was not that it was highly favorable towards this in terms of its marijuana leaf infographic.
Okay.
John's looking at me.
All right. My other question was about AB 228 and hemp-derived CBD.
Yes.
And I'm just trying to figure out, maybe you just know, but under whose jurisdiction the, the regulatory structure for this industry is going to fall under?
It's a great question. And you were listening to my phone today because I had a long call on this. So, AB 228 was, it's from Assemblywoman Aggie R. Curry, who's from the Davis area. And for the public and for everyone, hemp is not regulated in the state of grave concern because I know a lot of Central Valley farmers really want to grow hemp, put a lot of people to work, save water, but also the health benefits. And you all weighed in specifically into health benefits. The concern was, the administration had concerns with the bill because they felt it should have, it should mirror all the cannabis regs. And a lot of the farmers and others are saying no because they're two completely different plants. They look alike, but they're totally different. So, who's going to do the regs? As of today, the plan could very well be, instead of doing regs, have more specificity in the bill to lay out kind of like testing, what to test for. But then, ideally, I think CDFA, Department of Food and Ag, would be better in charge of it because it's really an ag product.
Okay. Last question and then a request. So, last question's on AB 387, which is the wiener, the thing that he just introduced at the last minute for a public safety power shut-off. What is he trying to get at with...
Initially, it was, hey, P. Genie, you can't do these shut-offs. It impacts businesses. It impacts residents. There needs to be some type of process. And then, you know, at further discussions, it's like, well, Mother Nature is the process. Like, okay, well, then, there should be some type of reimbursement for impacts. So, that bill has been supported by a lot of cities. It's still in the works, but essentially, say, if you're doing these public safety shut-offs, where's the pot of funds that people can apply to? What are kind of the standards, what have you? And make it maybe a little bit tighter of, don't shut down all the power in one city if it's just in one sector that it's looking at.
And are they thinking at all about the, the centers where people could go, charge their phones and provide electricity for those in need because they were only considering one per county this last time?
Definitely on the radar. I'll happily flag that to his office. We've been in a lot of communication with them.
Please.
It's going to go through some more amendments and they want to get this bill heard really quickly when they come back.
Great. And then, the, my last comment, Mr. Mayor, is just for our upcoming legislative priorities. I'm hoping to add to the sustainability bullet slash resiliency for the same reasons because as we, you know, the, the power safety shut-offs become a part of our future, especially in, in the city, I think we're interested in microgrids and battery storage as well as, you know, for, for other resiliency efforts. So, that might be tied into the climate change bullet for, for sea level rise.
Okay.
So, you know, I think being on the water and having members of the public here who live at Watergate, I think whatever is coming down the pike that we might benefit from, like to look out for.
Gotcha. Be aware of that.
I'd like to second onto that sentiment and that it just seems like the state could say yes to parcel-to-parcel transmission. Pretty simple, not, not across the public right away. And wow, that would just get the whole thing started with, with them just saying yes. And I don't know, it seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, I remember last year, that was something that you raised about the battery storage and the sharing. On sea level rise, there's three bills right now to seek, two in the Assembly, one in the Senate, to do the legislative intent for future bonds. Assemblymember Mullen and Assemblymember Garcia in the Assembly and Senator Allen in the Senate, and it's about sea level rise, climate change adaptation. So, I will add that also to our list for things to track and areas where we could help get the pots higher to work on that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we've drifted from comments...
Sorry.
From questions to comments. So, are these questions or comments? If you can wait, I'll go ahead and take public comment.
I'll wait.
Yeah. So, does there any public want to weigh in on legislative agenda? Seeing none, Member Bowders. What?
I just said I like what you're doing.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll align my, some of my comments, obviously, with what Councilmember Martinez and Donahue have both said. My couple of questions are, off the top of your head, do you know the vehicle number that Senator Bell is using for Faster Bay Area?
Yes, SB 278.
270?
278.
278.
And thank you for raising that.
Yeah. So, my, my thing is, I would like us to, I don't know that we're going to have much time, but I, I really think we should be putting in a letter of concern on SB 278. For those who aren't as familiar, a number of different stakeholder groups, Silicon Valley Leadership, SPUR, the Bay Area Council, have been pushing the concept of a 1% sales tax for the 2020 ballot measure to promote this regional transportation investment concept that is still a concept and it has not really been vetted. And the Alameda County Transportation Commission voted unanimously to send a letter of concern coming out of our policy committee about that simply because it has very little public agency input. It has very little diversity among its stakeholder group and there is this effort by Senator Bell in his last year, I believe, to rush this through, similar to what he did with Regional Measure 3, which really, the first iteration of that disadvantaged Alameda County cities and it really required us to fight Senator Bell at the Capitol. And the, the game they're playing is they have asked every county transportation agency for a list of projects that we want. So, the game is, tell us that you want what you want or don't, you know, you'll be on the menu if you don't. But then, by giving it to them, then they run ahead and they basically say, here's a list of projects that should be funded. And cities and counties should take back control of the conversation by being in contact and expressing concern. And this isn't something we want to shut down, but we want a table till 2022 and we want to have a more robust discussion about how this is going to be funded and what it will go to. There's talk about, oh, well, we'll give rebates, tax filing rebates to low-income people. We know those things don't work. Nobody is going to go and file for a rebate for all their sales taxes into the year. It's an onerous process for a low-income person. So, I have, and it's shared by the other representatives in the county, a lot of concerns about Faster Bay Area, and I know it has a bill, I just don't know the number. And there's a potential that it's going to get plugged into the bill in January and get a hearing by the end of January. So, I, I don't know if folks feel like they have enough information or want to wait and take time and make a decision in January. The process will go on beyond January, to be fair, but a lot of it is going to be cooked, I think, in January. And so, I just wanted to share that here because I personally think that we should, we should express strong reservations about SB 278 and be on record with that.
And if I could jump in on that as an update, the Bay Area Caucus, it's an informal group, they're meeting, I think, the January 9th and 10th for their retreat, and this is item number one...
Yeah.
...to talk about it. So, I do, I'm with you. I think it'd be smart to weigh in now at the letter, knowing that we could probably write additional letters, but especially for the time being. I sat down with Senator Tran's staff, which would be the lead staff writing it, and props to ACTC because he said I was the second to speak to them on a municipal level. I said, well, who's the first? He said ACTC. So, I know that they're working it hard. I do think it makes sense to take some of their language, put it into kind of an Emeryville specific letter to submit, hopefully before the year's over.
Go ahead.
I really hate to put you on the spot with this, but I just had a, something that occurred to me this afternoon about TNC taxation.
Yes.
As you guys know, I've been sort of liaising with our neighboring cities, Oakland and Berkeley, about this. Our last communication with Senator Skinner's office was that that office thought we had the authority to go ahead and impose such a tax if we wanted to. Clearly, we're a little concerned about the litigious nature of the response from certain companies.
Can you clarify, I see some puzzled looks out there on which tax you're speaking of?
Oh, sorry. TNCs are transportation network companies. Those include Uber and Lyft. And the, the kind of tax I'm talking about, since as a council, we decided to consider for next November, which would be a percentage of a tax on the rideshare services provided. It's difficult to determine the origin and destination. None of those things have been worked out, just sort of a thing I've been talking with, with our fellow cities. Would, the goals would be to raise funds for active transportation projects and also to mitigate transportation impacts from those services, which account for as much as 40% of San Francisco's peak hour traffic. So, you know, kind of stuck in between this place of knowing where the legal line is, I was wondering, is it possible for the CPUC to clear up and since there is a new commissioner, to potentially issue clarification to cities about our ability to tax?
I will happily ask that. I will happily ask that. And for everyone else, so, as she was saying, as Councilmember was saying, there was legislation two years ago. Assemblymember Ting did it for the tax for San Francisco. The information is, when we did our research, was that it was based on an agreement between the Board of Supervisors, the mayor, and Uber and Lyft, and they're trying to memorialize that with legislation to put everything kind of nice and square so it was clear. Happy to reach out to the CPUC to see if we can get some type of like, something in writing in a direction.
That'd be awesome. To be clear, San Francisco has leverage. We don't have, they had over 90% polling for an IPO tax back when IPOs were thought to be beneficial for these companies. So, yeah, really interested in pursuing that. I would also like to ask you to update us if there's any conversations around Amazon and package delivery services, the safety impacts in communities, adding so much traffic to our streets and specifically the rate of accidents that are not being tracked. If there's any conversation around that in Sacramento, I'd love to be looped in and see if there's a way for us to support pushing that conversation forward because I think that's the next natural progression after TNCs.
I will add that, the, all I'm aware on Amazon was the proposal from Senator Glazer that was vetoed about the taxation of delivery of the goods...
Yeah.
...not from the warehouse, but to the actual point of purchase. But I will keep my ears open and do some rounds on the Amazon impact.
You know, probably an impossible bill to pass, but just curious if anyone was thinking about it. And let's see, oh, when the conversations move forward after the LAO's report on potential potency taxation, I would really appreciate it if you could bring up the problem of track and trace with that, since we did have shortages on our shelves in most cannabis dispensaries in California because of the limited amount of people who do that testing. And if that was just for THC versus CBD, much less doing different levels of THC potency, I think this proposal from the state would be setting this up for basically bare shelves across the state once again and much smaller tax returns than we were anticipating next year.
Great. Thank you. Member Donahue?
I know this is being considered in California, a modification of our building codes...
Yes.
...under the category of cross-laminated timber.
Yes.
And it would, if it passes as an accepted as it's being done in British Columbia, it would allow our city to develop sort of mid-rise 18-story buildings, potentially much more cost-effectively and safer in many ways than what's currently allowed. And if you could follow that, and I, I just think we have an inherent interest in that because we don't have any bedrock that's any closer than 1,000 feet underneath us and it's much lighter. It's, for our city, I think it would make a difference. And since we like being an urban city, it would help us do that in, I think, a better way and we have an interest in that going forward.
Perfect. I can add, I'll add that under sustainability.
Okay. And one, one more thing...
Please.
...that you've heard this before, but, you know, proportional parking ticketing deterrents. I'm just saying, we're about to have a whole bunch of meters in our city and it would be a nice option to have a way that we could do that, that would be accurate too, would wouldn't punish, but would deter. Proportionally.
I agree.
I feel like, sitting in the middle, we go from very active to some really wonderful plans that are, it's going to be challenging to get through. I liked that. So, I'm looking, I want you to follow up on the card club thing. That is very, that is very much something important to me. It says on my annotated agenda, I need a motion here.
For a study session?
For any actions that we ask.
So, I'm seeing not a need for one.
Do we need a motion to write a letter?
Not if it's consistent with the legislative program.
Is the position on faster consistent in the staff's opinion with that?
It, yeah, it's, it's kind of already reflected in the staff report, so I would say yes.
I just wanted, wanted to ask a question of the mayor to see if you're interested. In taking a trip to DC, I saw that was on the menu.
Over the mayor's conference?
And it's happened, and the, well, it, it doesn't always happen, have to happen in conjunction with the mayor's conference.
It's a good time. It's very helpful for the US Conference of Mayors. A lot of mayors nearby go. We also, our team in DC is happy to set up any additional meetings. A lot goes on in the evenings with a lot of the different events going on. I know that homelessness is going to be another gather, there's going to be the big city manager in the gathering homelessness. We'd pack your dance card full.
Because this would be the time where we would approve your interstate travel if you want to go. So, we should talk about it.
It's not on the agenda, is it?
Nope. Well, but you couldn't, couldn't it be as a part of, because it's in their, the additional
advocacy tools in Washington DC advocacy trip is in the report? And that's traditionally something that the mayor attends? It's in their memorandum.
While you guys look for that, I'm going to come back around and say, I've had this conversation offline.
Yeah, if you say no, it doesn't matter.
And so, yeah. I will continue to have it. I think, I think with the window has closed as of this point, but I, the cost to the city versus the benefit was not there the last time I had the conversation. So, that was the challenge.
I made the trip for about $1,700.
Yeah.
The year I was mayor.
I strongly suspect your time, far more valuable than the quality you guys are getting out of my time.
I was just saying, I flew southwest and I stayed in a very cheap hotel and the meals were provided.
I can one-up you, last time I went to DC on the government's dime, I flew Spirit Airlines, so.
That's not a one-up in any definition.
It is on the cheapness scale. All right. So, I'm not seeing a need for a motion. I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. And with that, do you have enough direction from us?
Yes, we'll make the changes here. We'll start drafting a faster letter now, updates on everything that you all talked about and the card rooms, like, front and center.
Yeah, I think that's on the 18th.
So, Mr. Mayor...
Tomorrow, it's on the...
If I could just interject a couple of updates on that. Chief Tahada will be representing the city at the workshop on the card room proposed changes tomorrow. And I'll be working with Nicolo to reach out to some of the cities, although that was quite a long list you just sent me to call... To engage the city managers in those cities to organize around that as well. With regard to housing legislation from 2019, the Vice Mayor had made a request to us to bring forward an overview of the changes, of the impacts of that legislation on our local planning processes. We will be attempting to do that at a study session at your January 21 city council meeting as there are quite a number of changes that will be necessitated in our processes and rules as a result of SB 330 and some of the other Surplus Land Act changes. There's quite, quite, quite a lot that we're still absorbing, but I wanted to reassure the Vice Mayor that we'll be doing that in January.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I think we stand adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
It is 7:07.
I've got some Twitter fodder for you. There's this city came out that Uber and Lyft have caused a spike in drunk driving.
Oh, there's a-
And drunk spend shrinking.
Wait, no, no, before, hold on, the other one, the other one-
Thanks for that.
No, did you hear about this one? The one that just came out?
15. So, despite the excitement up here, it is 7:15. I call the successor, oh wait, I'm sorry, are we ready in the booth?
Yes.
Okay, I call the successor meeting to order at 7:15. Roll call needed?
Yep.
Good, we'll skip the roll call, approval of final agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
So I have a move from Member Bowders, a second from Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Any ex parte communications?
Mr. Mayor, I'm the member who-
Redevelopment.
Oh, please.
Nope, sorry.
That's okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. I was excited. So I have a consent calendar. Any comments on the redevelopment successor agency agenda? No, from the public. Seeing none, we'll go ahead to the consent calendar.
Still moved.
Second.
So I have a move from Member Medina, a second from Member Bowders. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. And with that, we are to the end of the agenda, so adjourn the meeting at 7:17. Now to the show. Okay, call to order the regular meeting of the city council at 7:17. Assume we don't need roll calls, so we'll move to the approval of the final agenda.
Still moved. I'll second.
So I have a Vice Mayor Martinez moves and Member Medina seconds.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, so we come to special orders of the day. This is the part that I'm most excited about. This is my first time as mayor and my first chance to do proclamations. I've followed so many great people and the different things that they have done, so I'm going to jump right into mine. I have two proclamations today. I'm not sure there was a need. It's on, okay, good. I was not sure there's a need for me to come all the way up here, but it is a tradition started by Member Bowders, and I like it, so I want to continue it. So now I have to move into serious mode. Today is International Data and Violence Against Sex Workers. So I've planned this day, I was not aware that Representative Ro Conan from Silicon Valley and presidential candidate and Senator Warren would be introducing legislation to study cesta-fasta. And while I have many thoughts on that piece of legislation, I'm going to spare you them this evening, but I'm glad that while I have this planned locally, globally, they're at least talking about those pieces of legislation and have been forced by activists to at least discuss or have a conversation that focuses on sex workers and their concerns. So, in my three years on council, we've spoken out in support of many different communities, the LGBT community, people experiencing homelessness, women, people of color, women of color, and there's a disproportionate overlap between those communities and sex work. So I stand here tonight, a straight, white male who's got a house and is now currently mayor, so a lot of privilege on my end, saying that it's my responsibility to make sure that everybody in this community has a voice. And so what little I can do is sort of this evening and take a moment and acknowledge that these are members of our community and really talk about community. When I got on this council, that was my focus, was community, and I really want to be inclusive in that. And it's interesting to me because it overlaps with my community. When I moved to the city 100 years ago, I was working in education, working with kids, and some friends of mine transitioned from working with kids to pay their bills into being sex workers. And as that's a tight-knit community, as you get to know one, you get to know a lot. And it really introduced me into some amazing people. And it's interesting, I formed lifelong friendships with people, and it's hard because you can't say, oh, let's come recognize this because it's not, we're not in that point in our society. But I look at where they've come and where they, you know, started out with me, working in education, taking a more lucrative career at the time, and now have ended up as medical professionals, social workers, lawyers, teachers. It's just kind of interesting to me, some even in tech. But during that time, there was a big movement in San Francisco for unionization, you know, and that was happening at the same time, and I knew all the people peripherally or directly involved with that movement. And this was, you know, before cesta came out, so it was a while ago. And so that is why today I'm taking a moment and issuing a proclamation, I hope that I have the right one, issuing a proclamation on today recognizing December 17th as the International Data and Violence Against Sex Workers in the city of Emeryville. Whereas originally conceived by Dr. Annie Sprinkle and initiated in 2003 by the Sex Workers Outreach Project USA as a memorial and vigil for victims of violence, International Day to End Violence Against Sex Workers has empowered sex workers from cities around the world to come together and organize against discrimination and to remember victims of violence. And whereas sex workers experience a myriad of forms of violence, both interpersonal and institutional, due to their increased vulnerability and are exposed to a higher rate of occupational mortality than any other demographic group ever studied. And whereas no matter how many people feel about sex workers and the politics surrounding them, sex workers are part of our neighborhoods, communities, and our families, and are represented by people of all shapes, sizes, colors, ages, orientations, identities, and backgrounds, who are working in the sex industry for a wide variety of reasons. And whereas during the week of December 17th, sex worker communities and social justice organizations stage actions and vigils and work to raise awareness about violence that is commonly committed against sex workers. And whereas today, December 17th presents an opportunity to think about how you might become involved to let people know that sex workers, whether members, for example, of the LGBTQ community, undocumented individuals, people of color, and all those who are oppressed and at a higher risk of violence and exploitation, that they are not forgotten but are valued part of our communities. And now therefore be it resolved that during this recognition of International Day to End Violence Against Sex Workers and on behalf of the city of Emeryville and the people of the city of Emeryville, the mayor does hereby invite everyone to stand against criminalization and violence committed against our communities. Proclaimed this the 17th day of December 2019 by the mayor of the city of Emeryville. So again, violence against sex workers is incredibly high, both sexual and physical violence, and any statistic I quote up here today would be an underrepresentation. They're even working, so I want to take a moment and focus in on one organization in particular, and if you guys would come up and join me, I'd prefer to have somebody up here with me. So I've taken a moment to recognize St. James Infirmary, and I'll get to that in a moment. But they focus in on, you can come all the way up here. Please. It's not a big crowd, but please let them see you. St. James Infirmary has focused on harm reduction for years, for 20 years. This is their 20th anniversary. They've provided health care, a community, and a safety net for our friends and neighbors, which is why I'm honoring that San Francisco Health Clinic today. A different senator, Senator Warren back in the day, eventually Supreme Court Justice Warren, said vice is flourishing in Emeryville. Under the encouragement of city and police officials who are getting their cut, within a block of the police station of Emeryville, there are 12 houses of prostitution. And while that represents a quote from almost 100 years ago, it's still very much happening here in town. And so it is very much a part of our community, and they are very much a part of our community. Sex work and sex workers are still very much a part of our town. And there's even been talk, and I hope you do it, of bringing St. James Infirmary to the East Bay. Is that still on the table? So I'm hoping that, I'm looking forward to when that happens. So I'm going to take a moment and proclaim thanks to you guys and the great work that you do. So, recognizing St. James Infirmary and its work on behalf of sex workers, whereas St. James Infirmary was made possible because of the unique vision of sex worker rights activists from Coyote, call off your old tired ethics, and the Exotic Dancers Alliance, EDA, and a timely event in the San Francisco County Jail. And whereas in June of 1999, Coyote, EDA, and the San Francisco Department of Public Health opened St. James Infirmary, and over its 20 years of service, St. James Infirmary has served thousands of sex workers and their partners. And whereas it is the belief of St. James Infirmary that to achieve health equality in California, there must be a focus on providing comprehensive support to sex workers of color, and that the fight for liberation of those workers cannot be accomplished without fighting also for the liberation of trans people of color. And whereas founded on the principles of harm reduction, St. James Infirmary supports sex workers being treated with dignity and respect in every aspect of their life. And whereas St. James Infirmary challenges the conventional health care model that divides patients and providers and fosters unhealthy power dynamics, and their peer-based model creates a safe, trusted, and honest environment that provides services and empowers our community to define its own well-being. And whereas their peer-based health initiatives on behalf of sex workers are used as a model for improving occupational health and safety standards and developing a comprehensive medical and social services for sex workers around the world, now therefore be it resolved that especially on this day where the city council is recognizing International Day to End Violence Against Sex Workers, and on behalf of the city council, the mayor does hereby congratulate St. James Infirmary on its 20 years of fighting for the equity of sex workers and trans people of color, proclaimed on this 17th day of December 2019 by the mayor of the city of Emeryville. Thank you so much. I'm the clinical case manager at St. James, and we're actually working on our Trans Home SF right now, which is a new program we're starting. But yeah, St. James does amazing work, and I'm honored that we're here, and yeah, and thank you so much.
I'm Tony Newman. I'm the executive director of St. James. I come from a legal background, and we are now fighting with Governor Newsom, who voted for St. James in 1999, who's now governor, for decrime of sex work. We're working with the ACLU to work on decrime with Senator Chu, Scott Wiener, and several of the House. We hope to introduce that in January 2021, that sex workers is decrime, and they're no longer getting arrested for trying to survive and make money. We do try to help them where they're at and to improve their lives, but we're not here to judge them on why they do what they do. So thank you for the proclamation, and we appreciate it very much. Have a great day.
I don't know how I miss into my marks, but I love the fact that you guys are the, let me see if I get this right. In the Bay Area, you employ more trans women of color than any other entity. Is that accurate?
In the USA.
In the USA. That's just incredible. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Let's get a picture.
Oh, yes, please.
Let's get a picture.
And all for a picture.
Let's get a picture.
Everybody can take a picture. One, two, three.
Okay, city clerk, announcement of commission committee vacancies.
The only announcement I have tonight is to say that we are going to open up an unscheduled recruitment because we have found out that one of our planning commissioners will be resigning next, from the planning commission after next month's meeting. So Linda Barrera. Isn't that right, Charlie?
Yes.
Yes. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager report.
Skipping councilmember.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make it easy. I have none.
Sorry, councilmember, special announcement, reports on meetings attended. Looking to my left, nothing. To the right, nothing. Great, my meeting's tomorrow, so now we're to the city manager. Yeah, I could have skipped it.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. And from there, we're at ex parte, and I suspect Member Vice Mayor Martinez and someone thinks chair.
Mr. Mayor, regarding item 12.4, I am the city's representative on stop waste, so I discussed that item with several people at that agency.
Great, thank you. Any other ex parte communications? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on item 11.1, I've had a conversation with Brett Rosen at Trader Vicks. On item 11.2, I've had a conversation with Anna Nikotiris from the Bank Club Cafe. On item 11.3, I've had a conversation with Keisha Johnson from Robbens. On item 12.2, I've had a conversation with Betsy Cooley from the EMTA.
Any members of the public wishing to come speak? Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Anna. I am the third-generation owner of the bank club. We've been here in Emeryville for 60 years. Cabaret license helps with the business. People come, have a good time, get together. It's a neighborhood bar, and it really helps with business and, you know, bringing people together, so, you know. Mayor John, I mean Counselor John, I think he sang karaoke a few times at the club.
He's been known to do that.
So it's a cool place, you know, trying to keep it there. My grandfather and my dad put a lot of work in it all these years. They left their last breath in there, so hopefully I keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? What a personal privilege to discuss whether or not you sang.
Well, I have sung many times. We will not... We do not discuss the quality of such singing. But, yeah.
And with the debatable question of John's singing, we'll close the public hearing. And discussion?
I'll move the resolution.
I would just like to make a brief comment, if I may. I just want to thank you, Anna, for coming, and it doesn't hurt that I'm a regular patron of the Bank Club Cafe, but I think it's really important to not just approve this cabaret license tonight, but to follow through on the prior conversations we've had about bringing an agenda item forward, to give a full rebate of these license fees to these small businesses that are family-owned and operated in our city as a way of keeping them here. It is one of the most dynamic and organically Emeryville establishments that you can visit in this town, and it is a gem that we need to keep and preserve, and we can do that thing by taking actions that supports small businesses like theirs. So I will second the motion to approve this resolution.
And I'll take note to call on you first during future agenda items. And with that, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Martinez and a second from Member Bouders. Roll call.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Quite happy aye. With that, we move on to 11.3, a resolution authorizing a cabaret license to Rob Ben's for calendar year 2020. The public meeting... The public hearing is now open at 7:36. I will take any comment from the public.
Good evening. How are you? I lost my voice a little bit. My name is Keisha Johnson. I'm the general manager at Rob Ben's and also the aunt of Marshawn Lynch, who is the owner of Rob Ben's. So we are very excited to be new in the community of Emeryville. This has been a very smooth transition for us. We have quite a few businesses in Oakland, and we're very involved with the community and serving the homeless, and I've actually hired three homeless, and we've provided apartments for them as well. So we are excited to be here, and I feel that our cabaret license, again, will just bring more business. We are friends and family with Anna. We share a lot of knowledge with each other. She has helped us with a lot of transitions with this, and just being there with karaoke and having Councilmember John eating barbecue at our place on Tuesdays, which we're going to rush off to go eat now, but I think this will boost our business. I think this will help with the building that is going up across the street from us, bringing entertainment to some of the low-income community. So we're just excited, and we're excited to bring new things to Emeryville and be involved as much as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Seeing any other members of the public, I will close the hearing at 7:37, and I'll open up to comments. And now we've gone from singing to Member Bouders, barbecue.
I just want to thank Keisha for coming, Mr. Mayor, but I also... She was very modest. My short experience with Rob Ben's has been... It's an insanely generous establishment, and the conversations that we've had, Keisha, about your business and your family's interest in assisting the homeless, making places for people to stay, and giving people opportunities, everything that I know that you do that didn't get mentioned here today, I'm grateful to you for all those things. Yes, and get mac and cheese and green beans on the side. And I will move the resolution.
Okay. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, I'm happy to second that, but would just ask that you text us if Snoop Dogg's going to be in town again?
Actually, I did not know. We have celebrity bar ten meet there, and I was called on my day off to come personally cook for him when he should have been eating barbecue at ten. It was a pleasure and a surprise for me as well.
Fantastic to have you.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, you should know, though, tune in, what, January for Bar Rescue?
Yes. Bar Rescue will be in January, and we will also be feeding the homeless on Christmas Eve as well.
Yep.
I'm going to predict the future and say this motion's going to pass in a few minutes, and you guys are going to slowly leave. I have some thoughts about future events coming up that I'd like to discuss with you, so if you would leave your contact info with me. I've avoided going and geeking out as a big fan of both the player and the person that Mr. Lynch is. I have avoided Rob Ben's until now, but I have some big plans. No, I have small plans. I don't do big. I have small plans, but I'm very excited to have you in town.
Thank you.
And I... Both you personally and the business, because I love what I have been reading about it, and as I said, I'm trying not to geek out right now on Mr. Lynch. I am a huge fan.
Thank you.
I was listening to a discussion of his Pee-wee football experience today. So, and with that, I'm going to contain myself, and we have, I believe, Member Martinez made the motion, or Member Bouders made the motion, and Vice Mayor Martinez seconded it.
Nope, I seconded it.
Okay. I've totally... All I'm doing is remembering beast mode and run, so I apologize, and stats are going through my head. So, City Clerk, do you need me to figure out who made the motion and second, or do you have it?
I've got it right here.
Excellent. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Most certainly aye. Okay, that brings us to action items, and hopefully a little more decorum on my part. So first up is 12.1, Resolution City Council of Emeryville Accepting the Annual Audit Report, which includes the audited basic financial statements and auditor's opinion for the City of Emeryville for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. We don't want this presentation waived.
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases everyone, the Budget Advisory Committee is happy with the audit and would recommend that... The Budget Advisory Committee recommended it to the full council, so unless the council wishes to ask questions or have a full report as the liaison to that committee, I would recommend that we waive presentation and move to public comment.
Seeing any objections? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment, and I see someone coming. I don't have yellow cards, so please come and comment.
Good evening, city councilors. Bill Reuter, Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee, just want to confirm what our member, John Bouders, said. He's our liaison person. We had a good, solid look at the report. It's solid, it's sound, there are no problems, and we strongly recommend that it be accepted.
Any other members of the public wish to comment on our audit? I spent a lot of time reading this and getting ready for this discussion, so I'm saddened we're waiving presentation. Other comments?
I make this comment every other year, that I just think it's funny that the term "unmodified opinion" is like, super good in the accounting world.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just point out a couple of minor things that we would have gone over in the report that I think are important for the full council to know, which is that we had some findings with the ECDC in the prior year, and all of those findings have been resolved. And I think that's important to point out. Pedro's not feeling well tonight. I would have thanked him in person if he was here, because they've worked really hard on that. And then there is an increase in the OPAB liability that I think is important to note as well. It's fairly, you know, on a dollar-by-dollar basis, it's a fairly substantial increase, primarily because of the decrease in the discount rate and a couple of other factors. But that is something that we will be asking the Budget and Governance Committee to consider some steps at its February meeting to reduce that liability on our books by virtue of some, perhaps some investment tools. But that is a dollar figure that did go up, that ratings agencies look at when they look at fiscal health of cities. There was one other slide. Shoot. I can't remember what it was, but I'll get to you individually if I can remember what it was for... In a minute. But I do think it is more than the audit. It's the consolidated annual financial report of the city. So yes, it's important to get an unmodified audit, but it's equally important for us to upload this to the state. We do have a... The final thing is that our statement of net position is positive in terms of our overall financial position. That is not true for all cities. So I think that's something for us to be very grateful to the city council in terms of your prudent management of our financial resources, for us to have a positive statement of net position. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
So I'm going to take a moment and compliment Susan on the great work she did. I did read all of this documentation, and so I feel very comfortable. So excellent job. It was clear. It was concise. So thank you. Member Donahue, you look like you were going to make a comment.
Well, I just... I had one question that I wasn't able to find the answer to, which was, you know, it just seemed like we had something that was a loan that had seemed like it's uncollectible. What was that about?
Were you referring to the amount recorded for a loan related to 37061 Pablo Avenue? It's really part of the normal transaction. Some of the loans, the city does not expect to receive the money back, and there are terms in the agreement saying that if the loan is out there for so many years, and it's pretty much forgiving. So for accounting transactions, we have to recognize what we call a loss or an expense to offset that receivable. That's what it is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I'd like to echo your comments, Mr. Mayor. Susan, this report is as easy to read as one of these possibly could be. These are documents that I do not enjoy reading, and you really break it down in an effective way, and I appreciate the transparency with which Emeryville approaches its finances. I also got to say, you know, between this document and the state auditor's little heat map that showed us is the sole little splotch of green in the East Bay, clearly as a council and with our fantastic city staff, we've done some right things in terms of financial health, and I'm glad we're continuing this trend. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask Member Bouders if you'd like to make a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion from Member Bouders, a second from Vice Mayor Martinez, and before you take the roll call vote, I'm going to say thank you very much to the Budget Advisory Committee and Bill. I think the fact that we didn't need a presentation speaks to how much trust and faith we have in the excellent work you do, and that Susan does, and with that, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay. Item 12.2, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville Approving the Emeryville Transportation Management Association 2020 Budget and Setting Compensation to Operate It.
Mr. Mayor, just before Susan makes her presentation, we just wanted to let you know that Ronnie was unable to make it tonight because she's not feeling well, but Betsy Cooley has shown up in her stead if you have questions for the ETMA. Thank you.
Are we blaming Pedro for all the illnesses?
I was going to say, what is the best holiday party in the world that everyone is using the same excuse for right now, but...
So chief Yoder.
Apparently barbecue.
Barbecue at Rob Ben's.
Yeah, probably.
Chief Yoder called in sick too, just saying.
They heard you weren't singing there this evening.
Yeah, I don't sing at Rob Ben's. I only sing at Bank Club.
Susan, I apologize for the frivolity, and we'll let you get on with this presentation.
This new mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. For your consideration, tonight is the budget for ETMA for service year 2020. Our staff recommends that the city council approve the ETMA budget totaling $7.6 million. The ETMA board approved the budget on November 21st. Our staff also recommends that the city council approve the compensation to ETMA for $4 million. The proposed budget is higher than the preliminary budget that was presented to the city council in July due to the anticipated increase in operating and capital costs related to the bus yard side development. Due to the increase in operating costs, the city's general benefit contribution is now calculated at $560,000, $45,000 higher than the amount that is budgeted in the operating budget. Our staff will propose to increase that budget amount during the mid-cycle budget review. The proposed compensation is also higher than the preliminary compensation that was presented to the city council back in July. The increase is expected to be offset by an increase in the fiscal year 2019-20 PIB levy assessment. This concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. Public comment on the ETMA budget and compensation. Seeing no public comments, we'll move into discussion, staff discussion, or council discussion, sorry. So...
What about that bus yard?
I would just... Mr. Mayor, I would just commend the TMA board for moving forward with the plan to transition to the new yard, and that is anticipated to be completed in this coming calendar year. And that took a lot of work with the City of Oakland, with Caltrans, a lot of sometimes difficult partner agencies to work with, but that space is being secured and will be retrofitted, and it will provide some long-term stability, which will allow the TMA to then move into a new phase of infrastructure work around vehicles and charging stations and things that could be done to help make the experience on the Emery around a greener, cleaner experience environmentally. So I'm looking forward to years going forward, and I'll move the approval of the budget.
But any other comments before I look for a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I just want to thank the committee for all the work they do and appreciate both the person who was out sick, but also Betsy, so thank you. And with that, I have a motion by Member Bouders, a second by Member Medina. We'll take a vote.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, this brings us to 12.3, Resolution City Council of Emeryville Granting an Annual Card Room License to the Oaks Card Club for the calendar year 2020.
Mr. Mayor, can we waive presentation on this item?
For that?
So I see support for waiving presentation. We'll go right to public comment. And so any member of the public wish to comment on the card club license renewal? Seeing none, we'll move to discussion. And also open for a motion. I'd like to take a moment, and I'd like to move approval. I think I've made it clear, I'm a big supporter of gambling in town, so I'm going to move approval of the item.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. With that, we have a motion by Member... From Mayor Pats and Member Medina, seconded. Roll call vote, please. Can't even get my own name right.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay. Before we go any further on 12.4, I'm going to look to Member Martinez and see if she wants us to waive presentation on this one.
No, I actually...
But any other comments before I look for a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I just wanna thank the committee for all the work they do, and appreciate both the person who was out sick, but also Betsy, so thank you. And with that, I have a motion by Member Bowders, a second by Member Medina. We'll take a vote.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, this brings us to 12.3, Resolution City Council of Emeryville granting an annual card room license to the Oaks Card Club for the calendar year 2020.
Mr. Mayor, can we waive presentation on this item?
For that.
So I see support for waiving presentation. We'll go right to public comment. And so any member of the public wish to comment on the card club license renewal? Seeing none, we'll move to discussion. And also open for a motion. I'd like to take a moment, and I'd like to move approval. I think I've made it clear, I'm a big supporter of gambling in town, so I'm gonna move approval of the item.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. With that, we have a motion by Member, from Mayor Pats and Member Medina, seconded. Roll call vote, please. Can't even get my own name right.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, before we go any further on 12.4, I'm gonna look to Member Martinez and see if she wants us to waive presentation on this one.
No, I actually, I actually have a PowerPoint for you, and I think Nancy's gonna control. Yeah, would you mind? No, I'm gonna make, I'm, I, this is only gonna take 45 minutes.
No worries.
Just kidding.
Gonna have, put the mic, some mac and cheese in the microwave for me.
I've ordered barbecue for all of us.
We're gonna get through this, we're gonna fly through this.
It's bacon mac and cheese.
All right. Thank you, Nancy, for your assistance. So we're here tonight to discuss the possibility of having a countywide reusable foodware ordinance, or if we are interested in stop waste creating a model ordinance that cities can opt into. So we're gonna move forward. So we've got some policy objectives that we are trying to address as a county. One is waste reduction, developing a reuse infrastructure, and toxics reduction. We can move along. So what we've got right now is a culture of single-use disposable products. And while some are more problematic than others, really what it comes down to is trying to move us to reusable alternatives and move away from single-use disposable products, including those ones that are attractive-looking and look like they may be compostable, like the PLA-coated paper. And I learned today that PLA is polylactic acid, which is derived from cornstarch. And while that might be better than PE, which is a plastic-derived coating, it's still not composting in our landfill. And please correct me if I get any of this wrong, Nancy. Okay, so we're gonna move to the next slide. Yep, rewind.
So that, on those two images, this would be really, can you go back one slide?
You go back to three, Nancy.
So like the carryout box versus that, like, paper bowl?
Yeah.
Are both of those coated with that, what you're talking about, or are they different for each of those?
So I think that the paper bowl is actually coated with PE, which is polyethylene. And then the cardboard-looking one is coated with PLA, which is polylactic acid, which up until, like, even in 2017, industries were saying, hey, this is compostable. And guess what? Waste Management, our local hauler, still accepts these in the compost. So they're, they break down in some industrial settings, but in some, they're not. And what we're, what I'll get at, at the end of this presentation, is we're striving to achieve some consistency that'll work for all of our jurisdictions. Okay, so we can move on. Do you have any more questions on that?
No, I just didn't know what they were.
And I'll add, there's the life cycle of making the plastic, or whatever.
Right. So there's like, there are other issues with the toxics that are used to create those single-use objects, and their life cycle, and there's, there's all kinds of issues. So this slide is kind of showing us what, where we're at, which is actually a step better than I would say we were, where we were in the past. There's less plastic here, there's less wrappers, but if we could move to reusables in all of our dining establishments, that is a much better place for us to be. So the basic ordinance elements would be, this is what we're thinking at Stop Waste would be the good direction to head in, is reusable food service ware required for all dine-in establishments. That sounds like a really heavy load, but in Berkeley, even McDonald's has agreed to this with what they've established as a city. Single food ware must be BPI-certified compostable fiber, which is nonplastic. And single-use accessories, which is the straws, utensils, and condiment cups, things that you don't always need, are available only on demand or self-service. So we can move to the next slide. And then a couple of things that we could add on are a 25-cent charge for single-use cups and a 25 to 50 cent charge for to-go food service ware. Moving on. So other Bay Area foodware ordinances include 16 ordinances that are in development in other parts of California, and nine Bay Area ordinances have been adopted. There's one proposed state bill and one proposed ballot measure. The map doesn't include straws. So here's the, the great question. So we could either go with a countywide ordinance that Stop Waste would enforce, or we can have Stop Waste develop a model ordinance that provides more flexibility to the cities, and they can opt in. So the countywide ordinance, I think, makes a lot of sense for a city like ours that is small and doesn't necessarily have staff to separately enforce such an ordinance. The model ordinance would offer more flexibility. We could fine-tune it to our specific businesses, but we, we would have to invest in staff to go out and actually make sure that this happened. Other issues are confusion, city to city. So there are consumers who will go from city to city and not know what the difference is between the law in one city and the law in another city. And there are restaurants that own franchises across the county. And their compliance will be key to whether or not this is successful. So more of the challenges are avoiding disposable alternatives. We don't have a reusable infrastructure. This is a nascent industry. I've come across a couple of companies where they've got mobile facilities where they will deliver dishware and utensils and wash them onsite in kind of a distribution model. But this, the infrastructure doesn't really exist to support what we would like to do at a deep level. We already talked about the inconsistency across the county if we were to do the model ordinance. And then the resources to implement SB 1383. So SB 1383, essentially, we've brought this up at council in the past. But it's, it's legislation that is going to require really, really deep reporting on organics in landfill. And with the aim of making deep reductions to those organics in landfill because of the greenhouse, the short-term, short-lived climate pollutants, specifically methane, and, and really making a, moving that needle with the greenhouse gases that that methane in landfill produces. So essentially, Stop Waste is planning on taking a big lead in being the thought leader in the county and helping all of the cities to navigate what they are going to do when things become very clear. I believe in January, we'll get the rules and regulations, kind of like the final stamp on what we're expected to do for 1383, and Stop Waste assumes to be taking great responsibility on that. If we were to go with a countywide ordinance, they might have to shift priorities and be a little less of help on 1383. So that is just something that the staff at Stop Waste wanted to flag. There's a burden on businesses and consumers. There are health code concerns, and there's accessibility, as we remember from the issue with straws. There are communities who rely on certain things. Disabled communities who rely on straws, for instance, and paper straws are not working out for them. Next slide, please. So this is just an estimate of what these could cost. I just wanna caution that these aren't hard and fast numbers that have been looked at extremely closely. This is a best guess from the agency on what it would cost Stop Waste to handle these issues. So, some questions. Well, first of all, you know, in our report, we are, the questions are posed in a slightly different manner, but I just wanna start off with just checking the temperature of the council. And Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to ask for public comment at this time, I think it might be appropriate because we might start getting into discussion as we go through this.
When you frame it like that, I'm not sure I can say no. Public comment on this item? Going, going, okay. Staff, keep going.
Okay, so I just basically, I'm gonna be the conduit by which all of this information gets back to Stop Waste. Essentially, they've asked for our January meeting for board members to report back on what the cities are interested in. So first of all, are we interested in either of these ideas of either countywide implementation of a foodware ordinance or a model ordinance?
First of all, thank you for all of your work in perpetually doing the deep dive on this issue, both physically and intellectually. We've all seen it. I think I am in support of moving forward with this. I, my preference is for a countywide one, again, for smaller cities like ourselves. The cost of implementing this kind of ordinance is very high, as we've seen with some of our other more tailored ordinances. So I'd support a countywide model.
I agree with Councilmember Medina.
Member Bowders, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
I'll do my best to answer them, and Nancy's here for backup as well.
Okay, so the definition of dine-in establishments is table service restaurant?
It's not. It's, in Berkeley, actually, their ordinance includes McDonald's, for instance, so.
Right. So we, you're thinking of the straw regulation that defined dine-in restaurants in a certain way, where you're brought to a table, you're assigned a table. That doesn't have to be the definition, and in Berkeley, it is not.
So it's not yet defined?
No.
No.
So it could be the public market?
Yeah.
Yes, anything you're not taking out of the establishment.
Got it. So dine-in is just restricted to you, any wares that you would use that are not in a to-go form?
Yeah.
Okay.
And to be clear, Member Bowders, we haven't worked on a model ordinance yet, and this input would still be taken. I think it's, Berkeley did do a good job of really engaging all of the restaurants and getting them on board. To my understanding, that's what was reported to me. But I honestly think if we went the countywide route, that we'd have to have a pretty long lead and do a lot of bridge-building with the business community.
Yeah, so I guess that's getting to one of my, I'm gonna just put my couple of comments out there at the beginning so that they can be part of the conversation, and I don't like, gotcha anybody on anything. I mean, my first thing is that depending on, depending on this, some of the food establishments in this town, there's two things that come to mind. One is they don't necessarily staff or operate dishwashers. So we're looking at it as a practical issue. We're going to be potentially compelling them to do something that they're not doing in the business model. And I, that gives me a little heartburn, because the council has been, we've gone all in and supporting the minimum wage ordinance, but that is going to have a practical economic impact if people have already made a business decision that they are going to structurally change their organization and their service model such that they don't perhaps do dishware service, and they don't do dishwashing because they put their staffing at the front due to price compounding and wage compounding and all these other issues. So for me, on the environmental side, this is like a no-brainer for me. But this is complicated by how dine-in establishments is defined and the impacts of that. I can tell you that, I can imagine that there are a number of places in the city that, for whom this would be a substantial change to their model as a very small food service business. So I just wanna put that out there first, as the first item. And you've already kind of addressed the question I had, which was what is the definition of the term we're using here? But then I just, the other two points I was gonna raise, which don't apply to your first question, but I just put out there, the Air District is engaged in a process that by the quarter four of 2020, for the nine-county Bay Area, we will be implementing new rules for facilities on how they handle and process organics. And so like, waste landfills, composting facilities, things like that. And I'm not quite clear, listening to this presentation, how that may migrate upstream to impact service as well. So in terms of a countywide ordinance, I'm generally inclined to support a countywide approach. But I have these open questions about how regional regulation of the disposal of organics and some of these other things, like the single-use foodware and stuff, how those may or may not become, be compatible with things other regulatory agencies are doing. So I don't know if there's any comments on that. And then my last one is, is an aside, but there are other places that, for these single-use foodware items, like Ecap. So I go to Ecap on Sundays, and we use Styrofoam still, which is a huge problem. And Ecap is completely volunteer-driven. It does not have, we provide the rent and the utilities as a city, but it is not financially feasible for them to convert over to these more environmentally-friendly products. And so is the city, in taking this step, are we gonna then therefore commit financial assistance to a program like Ecap to ensure that it can also provide these single-use foodware items that are BPI-certified, which would keep lots of Styrofoam from being in encampments around, you know, Alameda County? So this begs other questions for me related to foodware in terms of how it impacts small businesses and low-income people and nonprofit services that currently cannot budget for those things. That's my questions.
Nancy, do you have an answer as to whether any of the local ordinances that are in effect or the ones contemplated at the state level affect nonprofits or entities that are not dine-in establishments, but might be food banks or other nonprofits that serve food?
I don't know at the state level, but locally, I was just at a workshop on Friday with a lot of cities, and they are trying, they're covering everybody except public schools because the state has, you know, made, made the argument that they're not regulated by that jurisdiction. So that would include, nobody mentioned exemptions for nonprofits. And we already have an ordinance that prohibits the use of those items. So it's a, seems like maybe, well, now I'm opining, but maybe we should be looking for grant funding to replace that material.
Yeah, there are programs in existence, like Rethink Disposable, where they actually will go into a facility and help assess. They have an assessment tool where they say, well, this is how much you're spending on those disposable items. Here, here's how much you can actually be saving by switching your model.
That's right. And if I may, I'll also say about the dishwashing facilities, that that's a recognized issue, and that some cities are saying, well, we'll require it for new businesses over a certain square footage, but not for existing building, businesses. And that's what Councilmember Vice Mayor Martinez was talking about with the infrastructure. So a third-party service, which may cost the same or less or more. I think it depends on developing the infrastructure.
And John, I think you're bringing up some good questions, and I think one thing that we could do is that you, you could express interest in a countywide ordinance with the, with my promise that I would come back before we actually voted on anything at Stop Waste. And I want you to know that there are plenty of people on the board who will bring up the exact same issues that you did. And we have the support of our technical advisory group. So there are staff members from all of our cities and from the county who are looking closely at all of these issues. And as Nancy said, the, the lack of the infrastructure is a recognized challenge that we will, you know, we know is part of an issue. But it's kind of, I think it's the executive director's aim to kind of, she's taking the temperature of all the cities right now before we invest a lot of staff time in going down one road or the other. Because I think many of the cities have a very clear predilection for one thing or the other thing, and we kind of need to hash that out before we take those steps to, to get into the nitty-gritty. Is that right, Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask her one more question? What's the, between staff and Vice Mayor Martinez, what has been the outreach to the food establishment in the city of Emeryville to date? Have we not gotten to that point in the process?
Not there yet.
Not in this one. When, last year, when we talked about the same issue or a version of this issue, I went to EDAC and spoke to them about it, but beyond that, we haven't begun this effort.
And I'll say that, you know, my personal philosophy on this is if, that we're going to come down with a far-reaching ordinance that we, it has to have a very long lead, like years. So.
Member Donahue?
I started to think about this in a too-creative way, perhaps. I remember eating in various Ethiopian restaurants where you take that really nice spongy bread, and that is your utensil. The food itself is your utensil. And then I started to think about, you know, what would work for to-go food? Well, if everyone were required to show up with their water bottle... Well, if everyone were required to show up with their water bottle, whatever it is, and the county requires all eating establishments to supply water to individual containers, you know, customer-owned containers, and there was something maybe that would be acceptable to the county, like wax paper, that, that could be the universal to-go thing, that would be it. Only wax paper would be you as a restaurant, if you're gonna have to-go food, it has to leave in wax paper. And, you know, maybe there's paper bags containing the wax paper, but, you know, something could be done to really reduce, uh, with today's technology and emphasizing, uh, what people really do. And then, you know, of course, when I started talking about this with, uh, my worker, he was like, "We could have dogs at every restaurant licking people's hands after they finish." Dual-purpose, you know?
Your hands?
Yeah, so, and then plus, you'd be getting extra immunity for anything left over on your hands. Okay, gone too far, but, you know, these are points of discussion.
Just gonna have a drink of water over here.
May I ask, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanna, um, see if there are any specific thoughts on the, um, bullets that are on the slide before us, um, uh, whether we should have reusable food service ware required for all dine-in establishments? Um, and I, I understand there, you know, we could work out the, the caveats for interim, by using different kinds of timing for when this is implemented, for those that don't have the infrastructure for reusable implements. There are different ways to solve these issues, but I just wanted to take everyone's temperature on, on these suggested, um, elements to an ordinance.
Right, I think we'll come back to that, I think, Member, did you want to have a comment?
Yeah, I, no, I just was gonna respond to her question.
Um, I'm gonna say a few things, and then we'll go through the questions. I'm gonna one-up Scott and go banana leaves, they're wonderful wrap, for wrapping food, and, uh, wax paper's made from petroleum, so just gonna throw that out there. Um, I think I wanna just echo, uh, some of the concerns that were raised and talk about the solutions to them, is why I think it has to be a countywide ordinance. I think anything we do locally, uh, on this, this is too big of an issue, it is, uh, when you mentioned the environmental impact, um, you know, uh, I look around me, it's drink containers, you know, the, uh, the number of cups out in this world is incredible, uh, bottles and cans, yes, I did see the drink as I said this, um, and, uh, takeaway items and Styrofoam. I do think there is some exemptions for non-restaurants would be something that would be reasonable, uh, but I do, I'm saddened to hear about the Styrofoam. Um, so where is the council on reusable food service ware required for all dine-in establishments? I'm seeing some nods, I think.
As a goal?
It's a good goal.
As a goal, yes, I, I concur with the long lead times and logistical issues we need to be figured out, but as a high bar goal, yeah, let's go back to the 1950s.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say 70s, but that's okay.
They had plastic in the 70s.
You were, single-use food, I, I think, I wanna say I remember public market having communal dishwashing, at least for trays, and I thought maybe cups, I'm trying to remember. Do you remember, Scott?
I can't, uh...
Yeah, for some reason, I just remember that they would, they were color-coded, it was interesting.
I think they're just wiping everything, dry wiping is how I've seen.
Well, they, they do the same for the metal, anyways. Single-use foodware must be BPI-certified compostable fiber, non-plastic.
I mean, or other material that hits that, banana leaves, whatever.
Well, that'd be certified compostable fiber.
But it's not BPI, right? Is it?
BPI might certify other, uh, yeah. So, for instance, the, um, in, at my house, I've got the, the ones that give you splinters in your mouth that are actually bamboo or wood.
I have the bamboo silverware as well.
Lucky kids.
Yeah, party at my house is fun.
We do A at our house, the reusable, but the, for my office, I have the, the wood serving ware. Uh, so I saw, I hear two on that, I, do I got three, four, and five even, wow. And then, "Single-use accessories available only on-demand self-service."
This is the one I had a comment on.
Please.
I'm, so, yes, for this, but I'm opposed to the charging 25 cents, because again, the accessibility issue with it, people, um, who have severe physical disabilities or more likely to be on SSI or disability and have lower incomes overall, having to pay 25 cents every time you get food, unjust burden.
Okay, so, I, just to clarify, is that, that 25 cents, if it were just for the coffee cups or, uh, to-go cups? Or for to-go, um, containers, that's still an issue, right?
You know, I think it is. Um, I mean, I'd be open to seeing more information about that, but I do think from the disability community that could be quite a compounding cost, especially if you cannot prepare your own food necessarily due to hand limitations.
All right.
And I would just add, I completely agree with Member, um, Medina on this, and I would just add that it also adds a cost to a product that further increases the price, which further jeopardizes the viability of a restaurant. So I, I don't support taxing every little item, um, because I think that it sounds good in a, in a, in a moment, like a 25 cents isn't that much for a cup, and I, I'd like to get rid of all single-use, obviously, but I think the idea of pricing, pricing these things as penalties, we have to look at what is it, what, what is it really doing? And I don't think it, for multiple parts of the economy and the people who it serves, it doesn't work. So I'm, I'm not a fan of the, I'm a fan of single-use on demand, but I, I have a lot, a lot of very, very few exceptions in my mind for what that should look like, but...
Well, I, I don't want to influence anyone's thinking on this, but I do wanna just, um, let you know that when we impose a fee on bags at the checkout, it influences consumer behavior, which in turn has demonstrable effects of plastic bags in our waterways. So there, there is, there, that, that's the reason, um, and it actually, it's, it's not to, to exact the fee, um, that's not the purpose of the fee. I'm not saying it's a good idea or a bad idea, it's not the purpose of the fee, it's to change people's behavior so they bring in their own cups and they bring in their own to-go ware.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to add a couple of things that I learned this week. Uh, one is that San Francisco is considering exempting people, uh, who use WIC or SNAP, uh, or some of the other services from these prices. The other thing is to consider them, um, uh, just, uh, for the restaurant to show the cost of the cup on the receipt, so it doesn't have to change the price, but either a set-price 25 cents or the actual cost of that disposable cup shown on the receipt as a behavior modification is another idea. So people are still thinking through all the ramifications of what, you know, what, how to address all these issues.
Member Medina, Medina?
I am vehemently opposed to the poor-shaming aspect of that. Um, I, I grew up on WIC and welfare, and my mother used to drive from Davis, where she was attending college, to Solano to purchase groceries because of the shame of having to have food stamps and not wanting me to be bullied at school. Having to present at a restaurant your WIC card, if you're a nursing mother, to say, "This is why I shouldn't have to pay 25 cents per cup," or having to have an argument about the fact that you might have an invisible disability, is not a position we should be putting members of our community in. Just, I'm flat out opposed to those things.
Yeah.
Member, uh, Bowers?
I, again, completely agree with Councilmember Medina, um, and I would, again, add on that I think even though you could separate out 25 or 50 cents onto a receipt, um, if I was to ask everybody here to itemize their last receipt, um, at any place they've eaten, nobody would do, be able to do it. Um, and the fact of the matter is that that's how other things like taxes and service charges, at the end, you look at your receipt for your lunch, says $59 for two people, you walk away thinking, "This is an expensive place to eat," and all those things add up, there's a, I, the, the budget nerd in me delights at looking at receipts and seeing how much actually is added on between the end of the food purchasing price and the total at the bottom of the receipt. And it's fascinating in certain communities how much is added on. And so I, I feel like it, it, there are these mechanisms by which people are trying to, I think you're right, trying to solve for that, right? How do we call that out or pull that out and help people, to Diane's point, think about their choices and then choose behavior changes? And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but I think for, it, it is different when a consumer goes into the Target and pays 10 cents for a plastic bag, right? And over time decides, "Well, this is gonna maybe be 100 bags a year I use, or I could just buy a reusable bag and take it with me," right? That does not impact the bottom line of the Target as the same way choosing to have, or having to pay for a cup, e- especially if we were doing this city-by-city, which I don't think I heard anyone say they want to do, but if that became the reality, right? That, that becomes a economic disadvantage for a community, and then for the businesses in it, and in particular for food service. So those, those are my concerns with putting fees on these things. I, I think it's something that could be done at some point, but I don't think it should be the thing we do out of the gate myself.
Okay, I hear that.
So, while I share a lot of the concerns, this is one of those moments where all I am picturing is the visible hand of government, because the invisible hand of the marketplace has not moved the needle on this discussion. And while I hear the concerns for low-income people with physical challenges, um, we're talking about global behavior, you know, I, I myself put in several stockings last year, reusable straws for people who I know are required to use them and the cleaning service. And I just want to say that the cost of a single-use cup is getting more expensive every day, and we're not passing that on to the consumer. We are leaving it in the waterways, we are paying for the subsidies for the oil that's producing and transporting it.
Landfill fees.
Landfill fees, you name it, and I, because of the world I live in, I spent part of today discussing the tax structure and the Tax, uh, Reauthorization Act of 1918, which was 100 years ago, um, and how the top marginal tax rate was 77%, over a million dollars of income. And that is how we paid for things, as opposed to now where we nickel-and-dime everybody on fees and recycling, and, you know, we talk about having to deal with these things, the cost of cleanup from waste on the streets, the cost from cleanup in the waterways, the cost we're gonna pay for not cleaning the ocean. So my, my ask of stop waste is by all means, have a thoughtful discussion on this, but it comes down to what was said, we need to change behavior. The markets are not doing it for us, and if we keep going at the rate we are going at, we are not gonna keep going. And so it is, this is a big chunk of the waste stream, and so I think that's given you some direction. I'm not seeing the council, I, I'm sorry, somebody had another comment, or are we? Public, I have a public comment, we did public comment, um, but since we have so few public here, I will happily do one more public comment if everybody else is okay with that.
Please, please.
Allison, if you want to come on up, please.
Sorry, everyone, I had some transportation issues coming over here. Um, I'm Allison, I'm with the California Restaurant Association, um, oops, I just moved this, um, and I just wanted to open myself up as a resource for food service impacts that this has. Um, I know a couple of these that were, were appreciative that you guys have included, um, which is the, um, all disposable food must be BPI-certified, that's great, we are happy when there's any movement towards compostables and things like that. And then, um, allowing all accessories to be available upon request or self-service, that is huge, um, just so that if someone wants to self-select a straw, it doesn't disrupt, you know, the line and, and, you know, the flow of things. Um, our concerns about some negative, um, side effects of these come from the reusable foodware for dining space and, um, the tax, the charge on the, um, I think it was to, for cups, and then also maybe for, um, all-to-go, um, meals. So, um, I just wanted to open myself up, I know we're gonna send some official thing later, um, in the week to you guys that outlines this, but I just wanted to let you guys know that, um, if you have any questions about the details of those, that I'm here, um, and I'm interested in, you know, providing any input, and thank you guys for being so thoughtful about all the details, we appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, any last comments before we rack this up? I'm not seeing a need for a vote here, even though it's on my cheat sheet.
No, let's just tell, tell me what you want.
Yeah, and I will...
Let me be your instrument.
And so I'm gonna take the final word here, is before we move on, uh, unless Member Martinez asks for it. Um, I spent last week, I think I counted 20 different students that reached out to me to answer questions for their senior civics project.
Uh-huh.
From the ECCL, I don't know how many of you took the time, but I answered 20, at least, 20 different students' questions, and, uh, this was the one that was most challenging for me because it, while I think we need it at a county level, we need it at a national level, and if not that, a state level, because this issue is, we've gone way past the point of no return, and so we need to do something, and we need to do it now.
If it makes you feel any better, um, at Stop Waste, there are several members who are interested in kind of pushing the agency into a more of legislative leadership position and possibly sponsoring bills even.
Excellent.
Um, to, to, to really get at that state level, level of impact, um, with reducing politics in the economy.
Okay, and with that, we move to department head reports. Are there any department head reports?
Yes, Mayor Pats. Uh, as listed on your agenda, I have my report on the last Planning Commission meeting, which was last Thursday, December 12th. There were three items on the commission's agenda, and they're listed here on your agenda. First was the Marketplace Development Project Parcel B. Uh, as you may recall, at your November 5th meeting, you held a public hearing on the appeal of that, and you referred it to the commission for a supplemental report, and the commission held a public hearing and then crafted their supplemental report, which we will bring back to you, uh, at your January 21st meeting. Um, secondly, the commission considered an appeal of a staff decision on a conditional use permit for the Hilton Garden Inn. This was, uh, their first, uh, consideration of that appeal, where they decided which of the three tracks to go down, similar to what you did on the Marketplace Parcel B project, and they decided to set a public hearing on that appeal, which will be at the commission's January 23rd meeting. And finally, the commission held a study session on, uh, Biomed Realty's proposal, uh, for, uh, development of the Chiron PUD, Planned Unit Development. Um, they had a very robust discussion about it, I would say at the end, they did, uh, seem to have a consensus that as long as all of their concerns could be adequately addressed, and they did have a number of concerns, but as long as those concerns could be adequately addressed, they felt, they indicated that they felt that, uh, the project could be found to be substantially, uh, substantially conform with the preliminary development plan. So that concludes my report on the Planning Commission's December 12th meeting, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions? Yeah.
I do, on, on C, on the, the BMR, um, Center for Innovation, the, I haven't had a chance to view the conversation on that, Charlie, but your last statement that they, um, it was, this was a study session, but they said that if their concerns were addressed, they could find compliance, is that really something they said?
They didn't take a vote or anything, it was just a discussion, but they did indicate that as part of the discussion.
Is that something we usually solicit their feedback on at a study session? Cause it's not, there's not a formal filing in front of them to vote on, so I'm just, I, I'm just curious procedurally if the staff would like to opine on that, and Charlie or anyone, it, it just seems strange to me to have a, to preliminarily be able to say that we're gonna be able to find compliance with something that's in a study session. Is that a common thing we do?
Well, there was, um, I mean, that was the threshold question that the applicant, uh, had requested a response to, and there was nothing that committed the commission to any course of action. It was, uh, and as I say, no vote was taken, it was simply in part of their comments, I don't... I would say we followed a similar procedure with the Marketplace part, uh, project.
So, part of the issue, part, part of the purpose of the study session was for, was to, uh, provide the Planning Commission with, um, information regarding the Chiron PUD, um, and also to identify that the, any, uh, to identify for the commission the findings that they will need to be able to make when the FDP finally does come before them, um, and, uh, to, um, get the count, the, uh, to have the Planning Commission, um, identify issues that they may at this early stage, um, have with the, uh, conditions of the, um, FD, uh, conditions of the Chiron PDP, uh, that may, um, that may apply to the, uh, Chiron, to the FDP, um, and to identify those for the applicant, um, as they go through the, um, application process. Um, now, at this point, we don't have a application from them, but, uh, this was a first look for the, uh, for the Planning Commission, um, and so, uh, it was an opportunity for them to identify, um, concerns, early concerns that they may have, um, regarding the... they may have, um, regarding the, um, preliminary, uh, application in, in relationship to what the, uh, PDP requirements are.
Okay. So, any other questions for Charlie?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, on behalf of the Public Works Department, a couple of updates. Um, we did issue the notice to proceed for the South Bay Front Bridge. Um, so that, that would be a January 6th, uh, start date for that. It's a 350-day build in the contract. So that's a major step forward on that project. Um, we agreed today, uh, for, with regard to the Ashby Interchange Project with ACTC to reduce the number of alternatives for study to three, um, in terms of the interchange, um, structure. And that's consistent with what we had, I think, reported to the Public Works and Transportation Committee at the last meeting. Um, staff's preferred, um, design is the tight diamond, I believe, and that is.
Option E.
Uh, well, there's, it's four, five, and six. So four, five, and six remain. Uh, one, two, and three are now gone. Um, and we are also actively engaged to study a Vista Point location, um, with ACTC there as well. And then finally, um, at the January 21st meeting, we, uh, will be bringing to you a contract for tree trimming. Um, it's been, uh, several years now that we've had a, um, a proactive tree trimming program. And we conducted an RFP and we'll be bringing a contract to you for that, um, at the January meeting.
Any questions for Public Works? Okay. Uh, City Manager, if you'll indulge me, I, I know Pedro is out sick. Um, so I can either do it or I'd love for you to talk about the tree lighting.
Oh, I would love to talk about the tree lighting. Um, first of all, I wanna acknowledge our Public Works crews who, for the first time, did the lights outside themselves. Um, and just a little bit of, um, just proud of my folks. Um, they had to get certified to use the lift. And so they went through a training and got certified. And so three of our team members are now, um, certified in a way that they weren't before. So it's a professional development opportunity in addition to the fact that they actually put the lights up, um, which was great. Um, and as you know, we were, we had to, um, not have the parade, but we had a really lovely ceremony here in the lobby. And I wanna thank Stacy who did, again, such a terrific job, um, decorating the lobby, but also bringing some of our team members who are youth workers. And the mayor recognized, I think, seven?
Sounds right, yeah.
Seven of our, um, folks who worked primarily at the pool, but in community services. Um, and we had a full lobby. And I think that was in large part thanks to the cheerleaders, um, who performed from Emory and from, uh, the school. And it was the junior team and the senior team. Um, and they were really terrific. And then we had some carol singing. So we thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, um, the idea to honor the youth workers, cause I think that was a really special part of the night. Um, we also have a menorah up in our lobby for the first time this year at the request of a community member. So that's been a nice addition to our holiday decorations as well.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this year the tree was, did not staff participate in the decorating of the tree?
Uh, yes, but not as much as we had hoped. So we'll be working on that a little bit more next year.
Okay, every little bit helps. And I appreciate that. It was a wonderful ceremony. And I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledged Stacy, your whole team. And, uh, I believe that this is now required, that the entire council is trained on how to use the lift, right?
Yeah.
That's the next requirement.
The cherry picker.
I'm driving the freight elevator in my unit. I mean, I feel like I can do it.
You feel, well, and that's why we want you to get certified. We don't want you winging it. All right. And, uh, that brings us to future agenda items. I believe I promised Member Bouders the first crack at this.
I think we have a previously on-record, um, request to bring back from Chad, the, um, rebate item, right?
Yes.
Madam City Manager?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think we're already good with that, Mr. Mayor, but thank you for remembering.
Great. All right. Any other future agenda items?
I just wanted to check with, uh, staff to see if there was timing on the cannabis delivery item that we're bringing back. Do we know, do we have a date? A season, a year?
Oh, no. It's, it, there was an enormous amount of conversation about that. Um, did we say Feb, the first meeting in February? I, I will get back to you, but yes, there's been a ridiculous amount of conversation. I just can't remember what the conclusion was.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, any other agenda items? And with that, I have 8:36. We are adjourned.